I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carrasi, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Dr. Campbell? Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mr. Rose? Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Sustich?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 27th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. I need to announce executive sessions held October 16th, 2012 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and October 25th, 2012 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, and Ms. O'Rourke?
Actually, it's going to be Mrs. Floda's.
Ms. Floda?
I drew the short straw.
Okay.
Because Ms. O'Rourke has a couple other things to say this evening, I offered to save her voice and present this part of the presentation on her behalf. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Daniel Snyder, who has been named a semifinalist by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in its 2013 National Merit Scholarship Program. Dan is one of 16,000 high school seniors across the country who are now eligible to receive one of 8,300 National Merit Scholarships. Congratulations also go to seniors Shannon Fagan and Rachel Weida, who were named commended students in this program. While they are not eligible to receive a National Merit Scholarship, their scores on the PSAT last year put them among the top 50,000 scorers in the country. We're proud of all three of these students and wish Dan well as he continues in this prestigious scholarship program. Fourteen Bethel Park High School students were named Advanced Placement Scholars by the College Board for their outstanding scores on AP exams they took last spring at Bethel Park High School. Three students were named AP Scholars with distinction, and we congratulate Michael Konopelski, Nicholas Poe, and Marla Vaughn. Four students qualified as AP Scholars with honor. They are Adam Dodson, Jimmy Dykstra, Juliana Buckwald, and Dan Snyder. Seven students were named AP Scholars. Congratulations to Rhiannon Bear, Sarah Howley, Evan Schweitzer, Madeline Balzerini, Kevin Burke, Rachel Dunn, and Christian Hokai. Approximately 18 percent of the more than 1.8 million high school students worldwide who took the AP exams performed at a sufficiently high level to earn an AP Scholar Award. Students who score high enough on AP exams are eligible to earn college credit, advanced placement, or both. Twelve Bethel Park High School juniors successfully applied and were accepted into the Westinghouse Science Honors Institute. Congratulations to Jonathan Anashenko, Jared Single, Patrick Galice, Brandon Hanson, Christian Hokai, Anthony Holden, Katerina Kimes, Haley Lizari, Ryan Matthews, Laura Saleh, Michael Stevenson, and Logan Tuitt. Approximately 400 area juniors are accepted into this prestigious program and will attend a series of ten Saturday morning lectures on selected topics in science and engineering. Ten Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and have been selected to play in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's honors band concert. Congratulations to Joe Beaver, Travis Butler, Lucas Beaver, Mary Hannah Swainy, Alex Light, Tori Chori, Corey Crowboth, Joey Wasco, Sharon Braff, and Phoebe Georges. A special congratulations goes to Joe Beaver and Travis Butler, who had outstanding auditions and will be sitting in the first chair in their respective sections. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School freshman Grace Brogman, Macy Hall, and Natalie LaLama as its September Rotary Students of the Month. You may recall these young ladies were at our May meeting to talk about the Bring a Smile to the Service Program, which they began when they were students at Independence Middle School. That program encourages letter writing to American servicemen and women who are stationed overseas. Since 2010, the girls have communicated with over 100 servicemen and women to bring them words of cheer and support. Each month, the Rotary Club of Bethel Park recognizes Bethel Park High School students who have demonstrated a strong commitment to school and community service. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Lauren O'Brien, whose poem Wanderlust for Nymphius received the $250 First Place Award and was chosen for publication in the 2012 Ralph Munn Creative Writing Anthology. This book represents the work of 64 Allegheny County High School students from 25 different schools and is a publication of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. Lauren also had a second poem selected for inclusion in this anthology. Bethel Park High School students in Linda Broderick's personal finance class invited Brentwood Bank President and CFO Thomas Bailey to their classroom to thank him and the bank for their continued donation of copies of Your Personal Guide to Loans and Credit, which the students use as a part of their classroom materials. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park recently made the rounds to all Bethel Park Elementary Schools to present every third grader in the district with their own copy of Webster's Dictionary for Students. Each year, the Rotary gives every Bethel Park third grader this dictionary, and this year the students will really have a chance to put their spelling skills to work, as the Rotary and Dr. Stark are working together on a district-wide third grade spelling bee that will be held this January at Independence Middle School, so stay tuned for the details. We thank the Rotary for their continued support of our students. You may remember last month as part of the PTO Council's report that Lincoln students were going to participate in a week-long coin collection to raise money to purchase books for the newly opened library at the Manchester School in Pittsburgh, which recently reopened with only 40 books on their shelves. In one week, the Lincoln students raised $234.54 to purchase some sports-themed books that the school requested. This is one of two service projects designed to benefit children that the Lincoln students will be doing each year as part of a new community service initiative called Lincoln Thirty-eight Penn fourth graders read five books in preparation for this year's fourth grade Battle of the Books, with the students on the Reading Hawks coming in first place. Congratulations to Julian Ayersman, Chris Friend, Marissa Wasinski, and Sawyer DeAndrea. They edged out the Reading Werewolves in a tiebreaker question. Congratulations to the members of the Werewolves as well. Kelsey Aaronhal, Kayden Gray, Lily Williams, and Connor Meese. But in reality, all 38 of the students who participated were winners because they chose to read. The Bethel Park School District earned two awards in the Special Purpose Publication category in the 43rd Annual Educational Publications Contest sponsored by the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Earning an Award of Excellence was Past Times at Bethel High, a commemorative newsletter created for the farewell event held last September in the old high school gym. Earning an Honorable Mention Award was the New Bethel Park High School Dedication Ceremony, a commemorative program created for the February dedication of the new high school. Bethel Park High School will stage the classic play You Can't Take It With You Thursday through Saturday, November 8th through 10th, at 7:30 PM in the Bethel Park High School auditorium. Tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the door on performance evenings. Senior citizens can receive a discounted $3 admission to the Thursday, November 8th show only. You're invited to come out and enjoy this award-winning comedy. You have until Wednesday, October 31st, to submit a nomination for the 2012 Bethel Park High School Great Alumni Hall of Fame. This hall is designed to recognize Bethel Park High School graduates who have distinguished themselves through community service or the advancement of their profession. Nomination forms are available on the district's website, and we hope you will take an opportunity to nominate a deserving alumnus or two. And that concludes the good news report for this evening. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Ms. O'Rourke for an update on the district's performance on the 2012 PSSA exams.
Thank you, Mrs. Floda. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening to present the results of the 2012 PSSA overview of the Bethel Park School District. Unfortunately, Dr. Stark was going to share this presentation with me this evening, however, she's feeling under the weather, so it's on me the whole time, so bear with me. A little bit about the annual results of the PSSA. If you take a moment to review this slide, this goes through the percentage of students that are at the advanced or proficient level in reading, math, writing, and science by grade level. As we all know, the PSSAs are given to all students, third through eighth grade, and then 11th grade. When we look at the overall and the projected, the time in which the third grade has been taking the PSSAs, we broke them down from 2006 until 2012 in a comparison to the state average. As you can see, the state has stayed pretty well on an even kill, where Bethel Park has had opportunities of growth and maintains a standard well above the expected AYP status. Third grade math as well over the six years. Fourth grade reading from 2006 to 2012. Now, this is not a comparison of the same students over time, of course. This is a comparison of the third graders that were in third grade 2006, 2007, 2008, so on and so forth. Fourth grade math. The elementary with the, I think this is a highlight truly, to have 95 percent of our students in the fourth grade math program at proficient or above for the last three years. So whenever you have a statistical balance that is a three-year trend, you can say that whatever is happening at that particular grade level is something that we want to make sure that we continue to grow upon. Fifth grade reading. There's a, just to speak a little bit about what's happening in the state, at the state level, there has been a lot of talk about a dip that happens in fifth grade. As you can see in comparison, the fourth grade standard at the state was in the 70th percentile, whereas in fifth grade, there's a dip that goes down in the state to the 65th percentile of how many students are proficient or above. Bethel Park is the anomaly in that particular conversation that takes place, and one of the anomalies, there's other school districts that are also outperforming the standard, and we have not experienced a dip in that, a significant statistical dip in that grade level in the seven years in which this data has been collected. Fifth grade math. Once again, mathematics, our kids, 91 percent of our students are performing at or above the proficient level. Sixth grade reading. Sixth grade math. Seventh grade reading. Once again, over 90 percent of our students at or above the proficient level. And seventh grade math. Once again, 92 percent of our students at or above the proficient level. Eighth grade math even goes up a little bit further, 94 percent of our students, and eighth grade math, 86 percent of our students. 11th grade reading, 83 percent of our students. And as you can see, there's a dip that happens also at the secondary level across the state, where the performance level drops into the 60s, and our scores drop as well, and then math as well. We also, what's used for adequate yearly progress is math and the reading scores that go into the adequate yearly progress. Writing and science are also tests that are given to the students. Writing is given in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade, science in fourth, eighth, and 11th this past year. These are reported for school-wide scores, they also reported for district scores, however, they are not used for adequate yearly progress. Our writing, the first that's assessed in the PSSAs, is in fifth grade. 78 percent of the students were proficient or above. Eighth grade, 94 percent of our students were proficient or above this year, and the 11th grade, 96 percent of the students. That's also, I think, something that needs to be celebrated when we look at our scores. 96 percent of our students are proficient in the writing process in the 11th grade. That includes all students, so we're talking about kids that are, some of our neediest children are performing in the proficient and advanced range in the 11th grade, 11th grade level. Fourth grade science, 96 percent of our kids are proficient or above. Eighth grade science, 80 percent of our students, and 11th grade science, 56 percent of our students. And once again, you'll see the anomaly that the statewide, the scores go down, Bethel Park follows that trend as well. Longitudinal data, if we back up, and these would be most of the same kids, I'm not going to say it's 100 percent of the same kids, but most of the same kids over time, that were 11th graders last year, they were eighth graders in 2009, seventh graders in 2008, and so on. So these are the similar type kids, the same kids, over time, when they first took the PSSAs as fifth graders in 2006. And then I also, we also did a longitudinal study with our eighth graders, who took the test as eighth graders in 2012, they would be our current ninth graders, and when they were in third grade from 2007. Seventh grade? Sixth grade? Fifth grade? Fourth grade? Little bit about AYP status when we talk about AYP status for the school district. Bethel Park did not make AYP status this year. There were two issues in which we did not meet the mark. One of them was all of our students in 11th grade mathematics. We look at this as an opportunity in which to review what we already, what we're doing, and to talk about how we can improve our program. The administration at the high school, the math department, myself, and a variety of other people have already gotten together, and I think we're on a very good path to make sure that we meet that standard, quite frankly, exceed that standard is our goal coming into the 2013 testing period. Now, there is a change that's occurring at the 11th grade year this year with the state testing system. They are eliminating the PSSAs at 11th grade, there's not going to be PSSAs any longer, there's going to be the keystones. So there's a mathematical equation that is way beyond me on how they're going to correlate those two assessments, but our students will be taking the keystones in 11th grade this year in Algebra I, Biology, and Literature. Bethel Park also, and one of the areas in which we did not make AYP is kind of disappointing because I think we're doing what's right for kids. Our graduation rate, our overall graduation rate for students who are in a four-year cohort, which means they started in ninth grade and they graduate in those four years, that includes all students. So it's some of our most needy students that are placed outside of our district, that legally are able to stay within our system until they're 21 years of age. Quite frankly, we want to keep them because we think it's in their best interest to continue to get that schooling, continue to get that vocational training, continue to get to what they need to be productive citizens as adults. What that means then is our graduation rate for those kids, all students that are Bethel Park students, that graduation rate did not meet the criteria of AYP status. So therefore, the school district was placed on a warning list, which is disappointing at best, I'll be honest. I think all of us take this a little bit as a personal hit, but at the same time, it's one of those situations where I don't know that we want to do any different where those students are concerned, so so be it. I've taken the stance as the director of secondary ed that we're going to correct the issues that we have in math, because that'll benefit all children, and we're going to, you know, work with the system as far as our graduation rate and making sure that we're providing the best education that we possibly can for all of our children, including those that don't necessarily graduate in those four years. We also, the writing and science, as I said before, do not count. All Bethel Park schools continue to exceed the state average, we're well above the state average at this point. All of our elementary and middle schools will earn keystones again this coming year for the 11-12 school year. Adequate yearly progress is part of the No Child Left Behind federal law, and what it does is it holds districts accountable to the students, the parents, the community at large, and the purpose of AYP is to ensure that all students are achieving growth and getting at a specific level of reading and math abilities and skills. The law states that all students must reach proficiency, or at least proficiency, proficiency or advanced by 2014. School districts and schools must show AYP on several measurable targets, graduation rate, the PSSAs, and our graduation rate just overall was 95 percent for our students in our Bethel Park High School, so we did meet the criteria with the students that are with us. A school that misses only one major may not make AYP, and that's where we had with our math department. And I honestly, a few years ago, personally, we didn't make AYP at Neil Armstrong a few years ago. That's an opportunity for us to really delve deep into what the expectations are and how to better prepare our program and how best to plan it. Since that time, quite frankly, the growth that's happened at Neil Armstrong and at IMS has really gone, you know, gotten very, very high, and the standard is very high. I don't anticipate any different than that, than what's going to happen, which you'll see at the high school and with the rest of our schools in the future. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to truly grow our program. That's the conclusion. If anybody has any additional information that they would like to see through the state, right now, there are a variety of different ways in which you can, you can look at data, you know, you hear about it in the newspapers, there's websites that are available to you, and you can also go directly on the Pennsylvania Department of Ed website at www.education.state.p-a.us. If there are no questions or, that's it? And if it's okay with you, Mrs. Cook, I'll just go into one other small presentation that I have, and this is why Mrs. Floda did the good news, because it would have been Janet O'Rourke all night, and we all know we don't need that. One of the items that was being discussed in the district recently is our technology impact, and the amount of technology that, whether it be devices, software, programming, iPads, projectors, whatever it happens to be, the amount of the things that we've invested in, and how best to use those resources to best meet the needs of all students, and whether or not it looks like, you know, whether those investments are worthwhile investments, and how we can encourage and support those investments as we go through. So what was, we were charged with this past week is to kind of do an overview to some degree of the impact of some of the technology pieces, and this is not all-encompassing by any means. This is just a general overview of some of the things that have happened in our classrooms in the past few years and are impacting our students in such a positive way. And you, everybody in the room knows how much we depend on technology these days, and if technology doesn't work when we expect it to work, how frustrating it can be. Some of the things at the elementary level that have enhanced the program that we're offering our kids K through 4. Compassionacy, it's a, it's serving all of our K through 12, I'm sorry, K through 4 students. The students acquire basic skills, they're able to practice things, the teachers go into the, can go into the program, they can assign certain lessons, the lessons align with the curriculum, the kids get the opportunity to be re-taught in different pathways, so it's almost an individualized instructional tool that we can use with our students to better provide them the experience and the practice that they need to be successful in whatever we are asking them to do and whatever they choose to do in the future, whether it be college, world of work, military, or whatever. We've also increased at the elementary level the use of LCD projectors and interactive whiteboards. Sporadically through our board meetings in the last few years, you've had the opportunity to see some of those things. You're always welcome to come to the schools and take a look at it, but you really, when you have kids that can engage with the interactive whiteboard, the interactive whiteboard can help provide background knowledge, give kids visual cues and ways in which to show what they know and be able to see it in a different format, in a format, quite frankly, that their brains are becoming accustomed to as far as the visual, the auditory, and the hands-on process. The elementary has also had the opportunity to experience the use of iPads and minis. There were some need programs a few years ago where some of the elementary teachers wrote grants on how they would use the mini laptops, they were placed into their classroom, they, you, we got back some information, there was a video that went in and showed us all the, all the different ways in which the teachers and the students were benefiting from the use of the minis. iPads also provide that. It provides that opportunity for the individualized learning pathway that you can group and regroup students in your classroom, provide remediation, and extensions with our children. And now, many of our books are eBooks. We still have to purchase the hardbacked books, but you have the opportunity for kids to use the eBooks, and it's available for families and friends at home to be able to, instead of carrying the books with them. At Neil Armstrong, we have a package called Study Island. Annually, there's probably a half million to a little bit over that, questions that are answered on Study Island annually in the fifth and sixth grade. Study Island is a PSSA preparation online program that students can access both at school and at home, and they can school and at home, and they can practice different types of skills. The students, the teachers can adapt the program, that the students have to get a certain percentage correct before it goes into game mode. The kids love the game mode, you know, so they want to work hard to get those skills down so they can go into the game mode. Right now, just a little over a month into the school year, Neil Armstrong has already added 53,793 questions that are answered just with our current 5th and 6th grades. So they're using it, they're enjoying it, they access it at home, they access it in school. Read 180, this was one of the intervention programs that was purchased when Neil Armstrong did not make AYP a few years ago. It's a high-interest intervention program that the kids are able to use, and it goes into, there's a cycle that the kids go into. It's very prescriptive, it's diagnostic in nature, the kids work on the computer, then 20 minutes later, they're up working with the teacher, then 20 minutes later, they're doing some reading, and the program circles through. We found that many of the students that are using the Read 180 program in our learning support classrooms have grown well beyond a grade level during the process of being engaged in that program in 5th and 6th grade. We also have the opportunity to use equipment to engage and provide visual connections, opportunities, and individualized acceleration and remediation with our technology sources that are there. A quote that was in the report that I looked at from Neil Armstrong is "The use of technology provides visuals that promote a student's ability to organize and process information. Visuals can also be utilized to challenge students to think on levels that require higher-order thinking skills." And I think if we look at 21st century skills, that's what we're trying to do. We want kids to be engaged in higher-order thinking skills. Visuals, technology offers the opportunity to gear those things for the students. Independence Middle School, they also use the intervention program, Read 180, not the exact same way that Neil Armstrong does, but it does benefit the children, I think, pretty significantly. 74% of the students that were engaged in the program went up at least one proficiency level. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they went up to proficient, it might mean that a student was below basic and is now basic, but that's growing them more than a year that they need to close that gap between proficient and basic and below basic. Also, in the Academy of Reading, 58% of the students went up at least one proficiency level. So it's a direct connection. When we look at IMS' scores and they're in the 90th percentile, it's meeting the needs of those kids that are engaged in those programs as well as our general education curriculum that is meeting the needs of the kids. Academy of Math, 58% of the students improved their proficiency by at least one level. Study Island Science, IMS is now using Study Island Science in preparation for the PSSA science because it is aligned in making sure that we're asking questions in a manner in which the kids are being assessed. We found that once it was implemented, and it was just implemented for one year, 10% more students, it was like 60-some percent students were proficient or above, and it went up to the high 70% students were proficient or above. Same curriculum, the change truly was the inclusion of the PSSA, I mean, the Study Island Science. There was also a survey that was done, and 91% of the teachers at Independence State that the use of an LCD projector has enhanced the learning environment of their classroom. And at Bethel Park High School, we are engaging in intervention programs in Bethel Park High School to meet the needs of all of our students, most of the most needy with Read 180, Academy of Reading, Academy of Math, and Study Island. This year, with the change from the PSSAs to the Keystone's, there's an opportunity with something called USA Test Prep that the facilitators had an opportunity to take a look at, and it guides the students in preparation for the Keystone's. And for that, I'll explain a little bit about the Keystone's because it's a learning curve this year a little bit for us, and I'll explain that a little bit here at the end. It also provides students with different avenues, the technology at the high school provides students with the different avenues to acquire content, processing ideas, and making sense of concepts. Also, and I think it's so important, that information a few years ago was what we provided students. Technology provides the information as a limitless approach. So what we have in front of us, the students can gain almost instantaneously and gain more with the use of technology than what we have the opportunity to provide them just with the resources without technology. Little bit about the Keystone's, because I want to make sure that, especially when we're talking about something like USA Test Prep, the Keystone's this year are going to be given to all 11th graders in math, in the Algebra I, science, in the biology, and English, in the literature. All 11th graders, no matter when they took Algebra I, no matter when they took biology, no matter when they took the literature course. What that means is sometimes our curriculum, and what we found with the high school math data that we were looking at when we didn't make AYP, is our curriculum doesn't necessarily spiral back to those concepts to remind the kids that this is what you do when you get this type of question. The USA Test Prep will provide that information. So in December, all 11th graders plus any student who had Algebra I prior to this year will be taking the Keystone. That'll be in December. Also, all 11th graders plus those students that took biology prior to this year will be taking the Keystone in December. All 11th graders and those students who took the 10th grade literature class prior to this year will be taking the literature Keystone in January. Then, all of the students that are currently enrolled in Algebra I, Biology, and Literature will be taking the Keystone in the spring. What that means is we'll have the opportunity with the kids that aren't necessarily engaged in the course right now, they'll be able to take the test in December, January. If they don't fare well in that, they'll be able to take it again in the spring. We can offer them the USA Test Prep for some remedial pieces, we can offer them some study groups, those kind of things to help them to get to that information to be able to be successful in that test. So they'll have the opportunity to take the test numerous times to show what they know. For the graduating class of 2017, the requirement at this point is that during your years at either IMS, if you take Algebra I and then, or at the high school, you will pass those Keystone's for graduation. It's a graduation requirement. Does anybody have any questions about either of my presentations?
So it begins at graduation requirement with the class of...
2017. That's our current 8th graders, I believe. And it counts for AYP though, up from now until then, and will continue to count then.
And the requirement will be for math, for example, to pass Algebra I?
Correct. At this point. There was originally with the state, there were 10 Keystone's that were announced originally. They have funded three of those. I don't know what will happen in the next seven years. It may increase, but right now, it's those three. As that information comes out, we'll make sure that it's public for everyone to know exactly what the expectations are for our kids.
And it replaces the PSSA, so those students will not have to take both sets of testing?
The only ones that had to take both sets of testing are the 12th graders currently who did not pass the PSSA last year, they had to take the PSSA makeup this year. They don't have to take the Keystone, they had to take the PSSA makeup this year. 8th grade, if you are in Algebra I, you have to take the Algebra I Keystone and you have to take the PSSA math. Yes, sir.
When you get the results from the Keystone and from the PSSA, is there any diagnostic information available in terms of why people aren't hitting the proficiency level?
Sure, there's diagnostics that are available with both of what areas we are strong or weak in. Some of those are curricular. Some of the kids that I talked to this past year, you know, they had already been accepted into college, and when they took the PSSA, I don't know what happened because they shouldn't have scored where they did. They had showed growth all through their time, for whatever reason, they didn't do well in that 11th grade PSSA. So there is a lot of diagnostic information that really drives our planning and our processes of what we put into our curriculum, how we assess our curriculum, what opportunities we give for kids for enrichment and advancement, and making sure that we're meeting the needs of the kids. The assessment should sincerely be reflective of the standard, and if our curriculum and our instruction is aligned with the standard, the assessments will follow. I believe that there were some curricular, and I think the math department will agree with me, there was some curricular misalignment with some of the things that were assessed in 11th grade PSSA, and say, our calculus class that some of our kids were taking or the math class in which they were taken, there wasn't that spiraling in that review. So we just have to correct some things. It's an opportunity to really look at that and delve in and get some real good planning and processing and improving what we're doing. Anything else?
Just one other quick question, just to make sure, maybe a dumb question, but if our 8th graders, for example, take the Keystone exam for Algebra I and pass it, do they have to take it again?
They do not. If they take the, if the Keystone exam, if the kids take it in 8th grade and pass it, it gets banked. And then, when they become 11th graders, that's when it's used for their AYP status, and those kids, that's when it counts for their graduation. It gets banked. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all that information. Student Government.
Two weeks ago, we had Senior Week, which was a week at the high school where we kind of just recognized the seniors for their hard work for the past couple of weeks and just kind of let them know that we're here for them. And we had a senior breakfast day, and on Friday was senior night for the football players. And for the past two weeks, we've had a cookie sale for Bethel Bakery, and half of the proceeds go to UNICEF, so it's kind of like a trick-or-treat for UNICEF kind of thing. And next week, we're conducting freshman elections, so to kind of initiate the freshmen's into student government and get them involved. And we're just planning for this year, for the rest of the year, and should be a good year. So, thank you.
How was that Powderpuff game?
Well, I'm a junior, so it didn't go too well for us.
Sorry, shouldn't have brought it up. Thank you. Anybody from PTA/PTO Council this evening?
Okay, sorry, didn't see you, Kelly.
I'm representing all the PTO's this evening in this part of my talk. The pictures you have in front of you are from Ben Franklin. They just did their, well, they're continuing to do their bully prevention, and those are the T-shirts that the PTO bought for the teachers and, sorry, for the staff and the students, the students are most important. And they also had football players from the Bethel Park football team come and speak about loyalty, which is their, sorry, their theme for October. I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
They also had a bully puppet show, an anti-bully puppet show called Rumble in the Jungle. To continue on, we've got lots of news from Washington. They are in the midst of their Red Ribbon Week. They had a ribbon ceremony, a thumbprint pledge, and each day, the students get to dress up differently with bright colors or crazy hair or Black and Orange Day for school spirits. They're participating in all these great activities while learning to be drug-free. Last week, they had their Scholastic Book Fair, and a lot of their fundraising activities are wrapping up. They had their Read-a-thon, they had a goal of 30,000 minutes in two weeks, and they achieved that goal, so they got to sit anywhere in the cafeteria for lunch for one week. The PTO received 25% of the profit, and the teachers received 25% of the profit to purchase books for their classrooms. They're planning their teacher appreciation dinner for the elementary conferences, and their next PTO meeting is November 14th, if anybody's interested in joining them. At Lincoln, they continue to have many great activities. Vicky Stole My Thunder for that one with their ability to raise money for the Manchester School. They've had two family events at Chick-fil-A and Rita's, and they're working through their fundraising as well. They're looking forward to their Fall Festival that's held tomorrow night, if anybody would like to join them there. The 4th graders host the event with a Monster Mash dance party, pumpkin decorating, Steeler ticket raffle, Twister food, games, and a great time with families. And they're also planning their staff appreciation dinner to be held during the teacher conferences. Memorial had a very busy October as well. They had a great assembly with WTAE's Mike Harvey along with someone from the Science Center. The kids loved the assembly, and Vicky got a chance to be there to get some photos. Their Fall Festival was tonight. They had crafts, a not-so-haunted hallway, face painting, and more. They'll have their Halloween parade and their parties on the 31st, like all the elementary schools. They'll have their first Fall Bingo in November, and they have, they're also working on their And they also provided T-shirts for all their students to be distributed next week. William Penn, they've had a lot of great successes well in October. They've had lots of fundraisers, Big Ben's Barbecue, Louva Soaps, and Sarah's Candy. They had their assembly called Inspector I Want to Know. It was a comedy show packed with magic, and it covered the character traits of respect, trustworthiness, care, responsibility, fairness, and good citizenship. The students really seemed to enjoy it. And because of the successful fundraising that William Penn had last year, they voted to donate $4,300 to cover some of the wish lists for equipment that the teachers requested. I don't have details as to what those are, but I'm certainly interested. At Neil Armstrong, their fundraising is just about complete, they did a little better this year than last year. And they decided to divide the proceeds from their charity carnival this year between SHIM and Officer Rigatti's project, the Christmas food, and Adopt a Family. Speaking of Officer Rigatti, they have successfully finished up the IDs for grades K through 6. The PTO's generously donated to the police pals to buy a new ID machine, and they got quite a bit of use out of it this year. And for anybody who goes to Giant Eagle frequently, you can use your Giant Eagle card and sign up online for Apples for Students for any of the schools, and that helps the PTO's get free equipment, things for the playground, electronics, computer devices. So I encourage anybody who goes to Giant Eagle to sign up for that program as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Solicitor's report.
Have a written report for this evening?
Very good. Did we have any committee meetings? I think not. No, we're good to go on that one then. Public comments on any agenda items, agenda items only. Does anyone wish to address us on any agenda items this evening? Yes? You need to come to the mic, please. Name and address.
Okay, my name is Ron Workmeister, 4750, Robert Drive, Bethel Park, resident for 30 years. I don't have my glasses on, so I'm sure the agenda, from what I'm understanding, is about the school strike, you know, or nothing on the issues as far as being able to speak on behalf of some citizens here for the school issue here we have right now with potential strike? No?
No, you could speak at the end of the meeting on that. This is just for items that we're going to vote on tonight that are on the agenda, on the written agenda.
Okay, you can scrap that. Stay tuned.
Anybody on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move into business items, Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items tonight under curriculum, would any like any...
Would any like any held out? Hearing none, I move under curriculum, number one, the forensic competitions, number two, curriculum writing for 2012, 2013, and number three, the mid-year graduation list.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through three under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Sustage. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are nine items under Personnel Committee. Are there any that any would like to be held out? Not, I move that we approve, one, approval of substitutes, two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program, three, acceptance of resignation, four, change of assignment, five, approval of leave of absence, six, appointment of personnel, and seven, approval to extend unpaid leave of absence, eight, approval to extend temporary assignment, long-term substitute, and nine, approval to increase pay rate for substitute custodians.
Second.
Items one through nine under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spicusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Sustage.
Thank you. There are three items under Facilities and Services, but I would like any items held out separately. Seeing none, I'd like to move the following items. Number one, acceptance of a donation, and that would be the acceptance of a donation from the Bethel Park High School baseball boosters to renovate the baseball infield. I believe this is a perky field, with a project with a cost of $4,281.25. Number two, purchase of a pool cleaner for the new high school with a cost of $4,900, and that's replacing a pool cleaner that was brought over from the old building is obsolete. And number three, approval of various change orders for the high school project, and that's Change Order GC044 to Muscaro Construction, the amount of $3,056.09. A deduct change order to mainline pools in the amount of $1,775. Deduct change order HV013 to Skalix Industries in the deduction in the amount of $10,498.62. Deduct change order for EL024 to Calista Electric in the amount of $1,000. Change order EL025 to Calista Electric in the amount of $73,559. Deduct change order TE013, which is to West Merlin Electric, in the amount of $1,000. Finally, change order, a deduct change order DS004 to IP Logic in the amount of $6,525.42.
Second.
Items one through three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Sustage and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
It's nice to see the word deduct.
Yeah, the word deduct looks really good. And also those, while they're listed as a change order, those services, the electrical services, were all things that were in that initial approval for the fields.
Correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Finance Committee, Mr. Spicusa, would you please take Finance Committee for me tonight?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Seeing nine items under Finance Committee tonight, would anyone like any of the items held out separately? If not, I would like to move the following nine items. Item number one, October 2012 salaries and bills. Item number two, September 2012 financial report. Item number three, the approval of the contracts for the agency nursing services. Item number four, approval of the purchase of the wrestling mat for the high school gymnasium. Item number five, energy tax credit agreement. Item number six, the E-Rate consultant. Item number seven, approval of the advertising agreement. Item number eight, items declared unused and unnecessary, and item number nine, software maintenance agreements.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through nine under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicusa and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. And continuing with Mr. Spicusa, Policy Committee, please.
Thank you again. Two items under Policy Committee tonight, they're the final reading of the following policies. I'd like to move the approval of the policy number eight, 16 electronic records and signatures, and policy number eight, 815-2, educational use of student-owned technology devices.
Second.
Items one and two under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicusa and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on these items?
Mrs. Cook?
Yes, Mr. Amadis.
Just to comment on item number two, the educational use of student-owned technologies. I will be voting in favor of this because it's what the recommendation is. I just hope it doesn't lead to more problems than it's worth, and I hope that the, we can just get a lot of benefits out of it, but I will be voting in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Means?
Yeah, I have, I have a question about that, too. Item number 17 in the same policy. It says, "The use of SOTDs for camera or motion picture recording is strictly forbidden at all times in restrooms, locker rooms, and swimming pool areas." I feel that they really shouldn't be used at all in those areas. It takes one button to get to a camera, and it really should be deleted. Can I make a motion to delete that wording?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to delete the for-camera or motion picture recording so they'll be banned completely.
All right. I need you to make a motion to amend.
To delete item 17.
To amend the policy to delete item 17.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend item number two, the SOTD. Okay, to amend item number 17 in that, in that item and delete the word for camera or motion picture recording, and that way, the SOTDs will be eliminated completely. I mean, in the pool rooms and so on.
Okay. Let me get this down. Who's second, Mr. Sustage?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I have an amendment to be voted on, amendment moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Sustage to amend the policy 815.2 to delete.
For, in item number 17, for camera or motion picture recording.
Okay, you don't want to delete the item completely, you want to delete wording, the wording.
That wording, and then it will read, "The use of SOTDs is strictly forbidden at all times in restrooms, locker rooms, and swimming pool areas."
Okay. All right, so we're deleting for camera or motion picture recording.
Yes.
Any, can we discuss on that? Any discussion on this? Anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Just so you understand what, if I may, so we understand what we're talking about. We want to delete those words because we're concerned about the use of phones that have cameras being used in a locker room, in the swimming pool area. And by making this amendment, what we're doing is prohibiting the use of phones with cameras at all times in those respective areas.
And if, if I could just speak to that, a committee, a discipline committee got together this past, they've met three times in the past two weeks to review that policy and our discipline code aligned with that policy. The reason the recommendation of the change was, is there was a belief that, you know, sometimes kids might be going into the restroom and get a text message from their mother saying, "I'm bringing your tennis shoes." They take out the phone to read the text message, and they violated the policy, and therefore, they would lose their privileges. So it was one of those situations that we felt that there was times in which children or adults are in those particular areas and might receive a message or want to send a message quickly that they, you know, the game's been canceled or whatever, and that's an opportunity where they are moving throughout the building, and they could do that effectively and still get to class on time. And the reason they added those particular things is to make sure that it wasn't being used inappropriately in those areas with the camera piece of that. So it was to provide kids the opportunity to use the text messaging, because more often than not, that's when it's going to happen. It's going to be text messaging, and it's going to be, you know, while they're moving throughout the building or whatever. So that was the method behind the madness of putting those particular words in about the camera, because it was one of those situations where we really felt it may in fact be setting kids up for failure, because there, we felt that there would be an opportunity for kids to be using their phone, going into the restroom to do a quick text message. They therefore would violate the policy and therefore use the ability to use their personally-owned device. So, you know, that's, that's, that was the background knowledge of why that language was changed.
It seems like a fine line.
Correct.
What, what do we do now? I understand we don't use phones in schools, but kids have them in their pockets, obviously. They carry them around with them.
I think we would be naive to think that they don't.
They're in the restrooms with them currently, they're in the locker rooms with them currently.
I think we would be naive to think that we, they don't.
So I think, in essence, putting these words in is actually beefing up the policy or allowing us to have a correct method to delineate between the two instances of one being.
I understand the delineation between the correct and incorrect usage. That's not the problem I have. The problem is, when you get into a restroom and you get a ordinary little teenager, it's just too easy. Two clicks of the button, you have a picture. And, and it's just easier to enforce if the phone's not allowed to come out in the restroom or in the locker room.
If I may, and I totally agree, for the same reasons we do not put security cameras or other intrusion-type devices in restrooms and locker rooms. Student privacy in this particular area should be paramount, and I think they should not be allowed free use in those rooms, and the students can be reminded of that, and the consequences will be what they will be.
So you're saying they can keep them in their pockets and in their bags in these areas, but not be able to use them to get a text message or anything?
Yes, because the policy reads the use of these devices, doesn't say they can't bring them into the restroom. It just says they can't use them in the restroom and locker room, and I think that's a privacy issue for students in general.
Got you. All right. Anybody else? All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That amendment carries seven to zero. Now we're back to the, including those, now.
Yes.
So, so as amended, we're back to the original motion on the two items under Policy Committee. Any other discussion on the items under Policy Committee? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry seven to zero. Before I ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time, I thought I would take this opportunity to clarify the purpose of the public comments sections of our meeting, since we seem to have more people in attendance this evening than usual. As its name implies, Public Comments provides the residents of Bethel Park with the opportunity for you to share your opinions and viewpoints with the board. This part of the meeting is not designed as a question-and-answer session. Rather, this is your time to state your opinion about school district issues, initiatives, and actions. We welcome your opinions, but this is not the place for the board to respond to questions or engage in dialogue. This is your two minutes to tell us what's on your mind. We would ask that you address the board as a whole, rather than directing your comments to individual members, as this board acts as a committee of the whole, meaning that when we take action, regardless of how the individual vote ends, the majority decision is the direction the board will take, whether or not an individual member's vote coincided with the final decision. We know these are emotional times in public education, and we thank you for your respectful comments. We welcome your opinions and suggestions, and while we may not take any formal action on your comments this evening or in the near future, we do take all of your comments into consideration. We thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts and ideas with us. If you do have questions, you're welcome to contact our, the appropriate administrator, anybody in our administrative team during regular hours, and they'll be glad to assist you. The microphone is now open for residents of Bethel Park. Name and address at the mic. You have two minutes. It's your time now. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ron Workmeister. Live at 4750 Robert Drive, Bethel Park, resident for 30 years. I had two kids that went to Bethel Park from birth through their grown-up part, and I just wanted to say, this is easier for me to speak now because I have no bias here, right? I have no kids in school and everything else. So I've lived through both now having no kids and also having kids. And I'm old enough to tell you that I had lived through the very first teacher strike back at Wallace, and I knew back then what the issues were, and the teachers were telling us that they wanted to be treated like equal with the industry of Pennsylvania. You know, they evidently, and I'm not sure how this was, but they said their pay was low and benefits, things like that. So, fast forwarding now, we see that we do have benefits that are quite comparable to the industry. If you go to StopTeacherStrikes.org, you can see what salaries are. I know teachers personally, I know what their benefits are. I do know that I employ people at my, not my company more, but where I work. I know what the industry is with BS degree, master's degree, and doctor's degrees, what we pay, what the benefits are and everything else. So currently, right now, I feel that they have achieved what they had sought for way back, you know, when I was a kid. But now, when we look at what devastation teacher strikes have caused, this is why we have 37 states, and maybe it's more now, I don't know, because I know there are states that are pending to do away with it, just like Pennsylvania, that this is very disruptive, and it, I mean, it's just more than disruptive, it's catastrophic for, especially the seniors. We lived just now, a couple of years ago, through a teacher strike, and I know personally some people that have been devastated because of the teacher strike, and it was mostly the students. And what happened is that their future, their college education, their sports, everything was quite disrupted, and they actually, you know, messed up quite bad, so they got the shaft really, you know, fatter.
Mr. Workmeister, that's two minutes.
Oh, is that two minutes? All right. Holy crap.
It goes fast.
Well, I just hope that you guys would understand that we, you know, we've got to do away with these teacher strikes, and I think what I'm hearing is this 32-person limit is where this issue is. I don't see why the teachers are arguing about that. Let's, let's end this strike here and let the community live on, you know?
Thank you for your comments. It is fast.
Hello, my name is Joe Barbano. I live at 2743 Bethel Crest Drive. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of my three children. Two have, are now in college, went through the Bethel Park School District System. My daughter is a junior at Bethel Park High School. My main issue here is that I was reading the Pittsburgh Business Times, and it said that Bethel Park School District is 12th out of 104 districts, which I'm very proud of as a citizen of Bethel Park, and I can brag to my fellow workers and my family and tell them that, you know, we're 12th, you know, so. And I think we've got there for one reason, and the main reason, in my opinion, not one, the main reason is the teachers. I believe our teachers are the backbone of my children getting, now both being in college, and my daughter as a junior, doing really well in school. One of the main issues, as I've talked to several of the teachers and several of the other people that, you know, that work in the district, the main issue here seems to be the class size. And I don't feel that class size should be unlimited. I think that children, that the class sizes need to be smaller for the simple reason is that they need the special attention. I don't want my child being left behind because of maybe going from 25 or 30 kids to 40 or 45 kids. Now, I don't know, I'm not in negotiations, and I'm not here to negotiate the contract, but I am here to say that as far as class size, I would think that the main, if that's one of the main sticking issues, I think there needs to be a number. We need to get to it, and it can't be unlimited. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I have notes today. My name's Kim DeBaud. I live at 907 Hollyland Drive. I've spoken at the meeting last May, last, in September, and I'm here tonight making the same request. I am asking all the board members to please work and settle the contract. There is no reason why it should take two and a half years to accomplish this task. I have four facts that I'd like to state tonight. First one, the Bethel Park students are very successful. You've seen their accomplishments every day when you walk through our schools in our community. You not only see those accomplishments through test scores and a high ranking in Pennsylvania, but if you really look at things, you see the accomplishments in a kindergartner learning their first sight words, a second grader writing a paragraph, a fourth grader learning long division, a sixth grader building their first brocade. Our children, the students of Bethel Park, are growing and learning so much. But here's the most important thing, how did they learn these skills? How did they reach these goals? And the one answer is from the teachers of Bethel Park, who tirelessly work for our students. The second thing, I know, the teachers want a contract settlement. We want a settlement. The citizens of Bethel Park, and I'm sure you'll hear it tonight, they want this contract dispute settled. Everyone who's connected to Bethel Park wants to move forward and do what's good for the students and what's fair to the teachers. So tonight I asked the board, and I think your answer is going to be yes, do you want the best for the students?
Mr. Ball, it's two minutes.
The best for the teacher, and the best for the community? And if you do believe in your heart that you think, yes, I want the best, then you really do need to settle this contract immediately. You can't wait, and we don't, we shouldn't have to wait two and a half years. It's time to settle this as soon as possible. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Another month has passed and the same situation still exists. Over the past several months, I've heard several disconcerting comments in this room, several which came from directly from board members. Parents stated that one of the reasons why he moved to Bethel Park was because it is a more affluent community. He then compared us to Upper St. Clair and Mount Lebanon. We are very similar to Mount Lebanon in almost every way. A board member then stated that it is not true, that we are not a well-to-do community, that we don't have the resources they do. Well, I beg to differ. Again, we are very comparable to Mount Lebanon, and if this person does not believe we are as good as Mount Lebanon, then this person needs to reconsider representing us. This board member also stated that half of our budget goes to teachers. Remember, we have over three hundred and fifty teachers. Then a follow-up, follow-up board member mentioned that seventy-five percent of our budget goes towards salaries. So according to my calculation, that means twenty-five percent of our budget goes towards administrative staff. There's far fewer administrative staff than three hundred and fifty teachers. But I don't believe in capitulation either. I believe in a fair contract for the best teachers in the South Hills. With regards to class size, Mount Lebanon also has small elementary schools, so we're in the same boat. And I don't care if you have to hire another teacher, I don't want my child in an extra-large classroom. And if you ask any teacher, they'll tell you the stipend doesn't make a difference, as one community member suggested. It's not about the money, it's about the children. If you, the board, cannot negotiate an agreement, then I suggest you step aside and let someone else try. I've heard far too often the phrase, "We must walk a fine line" with regards to this board's position. There is no fine line, the children come first. If we're to provide a quality education, we need quality, fair, compensated teachers. Finally, I'm concerned that this board's focus isn't on the success of our children, but in seeing if you can break the union. This shouldn't be your focus.
That's two minutes, sir.
I feel we may need a parent task force to ensure that this and any future board's primary focus and interest is the children of our community. Bottom line is if you cannot get an agreement done, then we'll get someone in place who can. You should be the stewards of our children's future, not a politically aspiring barrier to our community's success. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comments? No other public comments?
Mrs. Cook, may I say something? I, I would like to reply to one comment there. I in no way said that Bethel Park isn't as good as Mount Lebanon. I said, "We don't have the financial resources of Mount Lebanon." And, and that's quite a different thing.
No, we're not going to get into a back and forth on the comments. Steve, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Steve Hustler, fifty-six hundred Library Road. I don't know, I'm not sure if people are getting information about, you know, the, this class size being the sticking point. So I don't know if that's true or not. But I know I did, you know, back when, it was about a little more than a year ago, each side kind of made their offers, and I, I emailed the school board and wrote a pretty extensive about my feelings about where I think both sides should compromise, because I really do believe that that, that needed to happen and needs to happen still, that there were issues on both sides, that concessions need to be made. But if it, if it is in fact down to class size, I, that, that is a hundred percent something that, that, that the board needs to give in on and that the administration needs to give in on. This is thirty, I know it's, I believe it's thirty-two is the number that we're trying to get rid of. That, that is too high of a class size as it is. There should, there should be twenty kids in a class, and that, that, there's nothing, you know, teachers need to be able to give individualized attention to students. That is, that is, if you have thirty, forty, forty kid classes, teachers teaching five or six classes, having to deal with two hundred, two hundred and fifty students, there's no way they can, the students can be given the individual attention they need to succeed in that class, that the teachers can grade all of those assignments effectively and give meaningful feedback. So if that is the final sticking point, I can, I can't even believe that that's, and I understand that that costs more money, because when you lessen class size, that means more teachers, that's more money, more benefits and everything. But that, that, that shouldn't even be a discussion. That is something that is so fundamental to, to successful education is, is class size, is that the teachers can actually manage and give kids the attention they need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A lot of comments about how long it's taken to assemble the contract, but nobody made any comments about how quickly we went on strike. Four months and we were already six weeks we locked our kids out. I feel that if the teachers' union is going to keep talking about classroom size in public forum like this, that that issue should be open, and we shouldn't have closed negotiations. And as someone asked about the board stepping down...
Excuse me one second, you step closer to the mic.
Sorry.
Some of the people in the back can hear you.
Okay. Questions about, you know, the board should step down if they can't do it, well, the other side should step down too. It's two and a half years. What is the sticking point? I know HMO was a huge issue, because it causes you to lose focus in the classroom. You know, there's silly issues here, but the thing is, if it, classroom size is going to keep being brought up at the meeting, and we're going to say thirty-two, forty people, I feel that both sides should agree to release what their information is, so there's no misinformation on the side, either side. Because right now, I'm here in forty, and I, I've seen classroom size, there's nowhere near forty. A lot of classrooms are nowhere near thirty. Classrooms are weighted. There's a big issue, and I, I just don't understand, if we're going to negotiate this in public, let's, both sides agree, and let's do it in public. No reason, and classroom size, I don't know, I don't even think it should be part of a labor contract. It should be an administrative tool. It's not a labor issue, so.
Thank you, I think you're doing a good job. Thank you. Anyone else?
Brenda Paisor, thirty-two twenty-four Rappahoe Road. Again, on, on the issue of class size, I thought you had, both sides had agreed to not negotiate in public. So where people are coming up with any number whatsoever, I don't understand. That's negotiating in public. You either are going to do it or you're not. And some of these numbers are downright absurd. Forty-five, someone last month said sixty students in a kindergarten classroom? I'd like somebody to show me a classroom in Bethel Park that can accommodate sixty students. It doesn't exist. The, the current contract has boundaries for class size. The most, there's twenty-five pupils K through three, twenty-nine K in grade four, twenty-seven five through six, twenty-seven six through eight, twenty-seven nine through twelve. And I, and I, I just think we shouldn't even be discussing any numbers in public at all, because they're either, they're false, or people are creating an unfair labor suit. I don't know if the board can sue the union, but perhaps that's what needs to happen, because that seems to be where this, these fallacies of class size information are coming from. Again, I would also like to reiterate, negotiations are supposed to go both ways, and everybody seems to be coming to the mic here, saying that you need to give in to negotiate. It, it's not like there's no offer on the floor. We've, we, the last offer we've seen was the final best offer. You made a very generous offer, it was rejected. There, this attitude that you're not negotiating or not offering anything is absurd. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back. I'm the lover, not a fighter. Donna DiCarlo, fifty-five ninety Beverly Court. I've been the phys ed teacher at Ben Franklin now for twenty-three years. I need a knee replacement. I'm a cripple, I've been teaching on a scooter for the last three weeks. I love kids. I want to thank all of you in the blue shirts. My daughter's a sophomore, thriving at a very hard school right now, loving it because of all of you in this room. As I said, I'm a lover. It's hard to love these days. In my twenty-three years, it is very difficult to get up and go to work. My colleagues, they don't have that jump in their step anymore. They don't want to be there, even though we love kids, because of the contract. I don't know a lot of legalities, I'm not that kind of a person. I'm not a fighter, as I said, but this is tough. It's hurting us, it's hurting the kids. I still try to give a hundred percent, but when I have to listen to colleagues and I have to live in the community, it hurts, and it hurts bad. I beg you, from the bottom of my heart, whatever we all have to do in this room, I can't live like this anymore. It's bad enough I can't walk, but I still want to love, and I want to do what I love to do with all my heart. So please, we need a contract. Thank you.
Seeing none, we're not going to take second comments. I'll move into board comments. Mr. Means.
Yeah, I, I agree we need a contract, and I would, I would implore that the teachers would settle. I think there's a good offer on the table, and, and we do appreciate our teachers, our teachers are well-paid. I think if you look at the salaries, nobody can claim that they're living in poverty the way teachers did thirty, forty years ago. The average teacher's salary is, fares very favorably with the average salary, the average family income in Bethel Park. So, you know, I would implore your half to, you know, come to the table and try and reach an agreement also.
Thank you, Mr. Spicuzza.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming this evening, and I, like everyone else, all of my colleagues up here on the board, would like to have a contract. I think one of the speakers tonight mentioned the word negotiations, and to me, negotiations are both sides coming together to meet in the middle. If that doesn't occur, I have fiscal responsibility to my citizens in this community. I cannot just give whatever someone wants. We have to meet in the middle. If you don't want to meet in the middle, we're going to be sitting here for a long time. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I'd just like to say that I believe that we're all in this room tonight for children, and on that, on their behalf, I'd like to thank Mrs. Rusak for her duty to the district and all that she's done for the kids, and also to congratulate Mrs. Sutton in her new position. I think you'll be a fine person in that position, and you are here for children, and I want to thank you both. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Rule.
Okay. I do like to thank everybody for coming, and we have been working at a contract, and I have had children in the school district for many, many years, sat through many, many strikes from the very beginning, and so I know what the issues were then, I know what they are now, but we want to try to at least come to some compromise. I'd like to report on the meetings that I've attended. The AIU meeting was very informative this month. We talked a lot about the evaluations that were going into play for the teachers that will be now mandated. Also, how the schools will be rated, it's going to take on a totally different picture. A lot of that information is up for discussion, but there are a lot of people not happy with either of them. But there are, they are going to be very difficult and challenging to all school districts. The other thing around cyber and charter schools, they are rarely gaining a lot of momentum, they do not have to meet the state standards, and that is going to be a big issue and a big competition, and we will continue to lose students, I'm sure, to that venue. So that's other things we have to think about, but that's what the Allegheny Intermediate Unit meeting was all about, and that's where forty-two schools come together and discuss what the issues are. And actually, we have reports from legislators as to where things are in Washington, and things are not looking that bright from at least districts and ratings and things like that, and other schools. The VOTEC school, the report from Steel Center is that we are about the same as we were in the past years with students here. We rank between the second and third highest district to have students at the VOTEC school. And a theme, and they also have restructured there too. They've brought in a individual to now be a principal, so you now have a director and a principal who is the disciplinarian individual in the district. So they are really going to be looking a lot different moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Sustich.
I, I'm not sure what to say. We, we all want a contract. I'm not going to negotiate in public. That is up to our negotiating team, the union negotiating team. I'm not going to let that come to the microphone. The only thing I will say, if you're going to come to the microphone, no matter what side you're on, just please state facts at the microphone, not hearsay, not conjecture, not what you think you're hearing, but if you have something to show us or something to say that really is a fact, we'd be glad to hear it. I'll be glad to hear it. Maybe not everybody else will, but I'll listen to all the facts. The only thing I ought to say is just a reminder for anybody who might be interested, we have a Facilities Committee meeting coming up November first in this room. We're going to be looking at the progress on the final rounds of the high school fields, and the, the big subject will also be Neil Armstrong and the HVAC project and some other building upgrades that are going to go on up there. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ammottis.
I want to say again, as I, as I said last month when I spoke up here when there was a large crowd here, just want to say again to remind everybody on, I, I take all, everything into consideration. I pledged that when I ran for the board the first time, and I continue to make that pledge, that I listen to all sides. I listen to everything that goes on from our negotiators, and I take everything in from everything I've heard and everything I've known, everything I've read over the years. And after that, I make the, the decisions that I think are best for the district. So with that in mind, just know that I am listening to everything, and I believe all the board members are as well, and we're hoping to come up with a consensus sometime soon. The second thing I wanted to say is in regard to a lot of the comments tonight, is that if class size was the only issue on the table, I do not think we would be here talking tonight. And that's all I would want to say about the contract. Lastly, and a few other things that I just wanted to say is congratulations, again, everybody saw the same presentation as I. We have a great district, we have a lot of fantastic students as their awards. Congratulations to all them, congratulate them, all the teachers who had a part in it, congratulate to all the parents and the community that had a part in making that success. And lastly, just to add on to what Mrs. Rule said about the VOTEC, it is a very good program down there as an alternative to college, and, you know, we, we need to start thinking that way as a board and maybe as a community, because kids are going to the VOTEC schools and they are graduating with paying jobs. So it is an alternative, it's not a nasty thing to go there, so just think that way. And that's all.
Thank you, sir. It is difficult to respond when we have agreed to not negotiate in public, and we sit here and listen to things being said at the microphone that are not accurate. Perhaps what the one speaker said, maybe we do need to look at how can we make negotiations more of a public process. I, I don't know if that's ever been tried here in Bethel, I know some other districts that have tried that. Maybe that's something that our negotiating team can discuss with the union negotiating team. But I'll reiterate my message last month, that to me, negotiations are compromise. Compromise don't mean capitulation, they mean compromise, but compromise comes from two sides, it doesn't just come from one side. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.[1748.46]